All righty. Mr. Kavanaugh is here. He can, it'd probably be best to have him explain which of the bricks are going in what places. And he can also address any questions he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. For the record, Councilman Schenk is now present. Cobb, why don't you come on up here and fill us in?
Well, the first, Sean, come on up. Sean has been working hard on this and really is in charge of documenting what we're trying to do here. The first item that you have is listed as Bourbon Street. That has been changed because we can't get the brick here in a timely fashion nor are we pleased with the quality of the brick. So, we're making a proposal to change it to mahogany, and mahogany is a combination of everything that you see here. If you guys are familiar with City of Longwood, it's Longwood, right where you guys are from, your street's on City of Longwood, very close to what they're using on their streets, which is their city standard. Both bricks are made by Pine Hall. This just comes out of a different manufacturing plant a little closer to Florida. I think it's out of Georgia somewhere where the other one comes out of, I don't know, North Carolina or Tennessee somewhere. So, we're proposing to use this as the base on the street horizontal, and Sean and Dick Slather will pull a color out of here, a darker red to, probably work better on the underside of that, a darker red which would be the vertical elements, the planters, the curves, the crosswalks would be in a contrasting different color, but we just wanted to make sure that you were happy with this on the ground. Okay. The other one here is what we're proposing to put on the apartments. You have actually seen this before, verbally approved it, but I just wanted to kind of show you a sample of it. The grout won't be as white. This looks too French country where we're going with more urban, so the brick will be spaced a little closer together. It'll be a little darker grout, but these two complement each other well.
There's that building in Water Park?
Yeah, it's also, there's a building in downtown Water Park that's using this brick. If you want to swing by and see it, it's right across the street from St. Margaret Mary Church. It'll be on the south side of St. Margaret Mary.
And it has the darker grout?
Yeah, it's the darker grout. We're proposing to use that sitting grout. As a matter of fact, I think I have a couple pictures on my phone if you wanted to see it.
That's beautiful. Everybody happy?
Yeah.
Good.
Happy, happy, happy.
Happy campers? All right.
Go forth and build.
Okay. We will change, we will change this to get the right nomenclature on it, submit it to staff if you don't mind, just for the record so it's out there so there's no confusion. We got a little bit more homework to do, like I said, to get the vertical pieces and kind of what I call the accent pieces to match this, but we needed to get this first.
We're staying in the red.
Well, this is the red. You consider that the red?
Even with the other, yes. Even with the vertical.
Right. We're just gonna pull out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the vertical's gonna be solid because when you start talking about those specialty curves and the bull nose, they don't make them in a multi-dimensional color, so it's gonna be a solid color.
Like a brick brick.
Yeah, it might be, it might be just that. It might be just the underside of that, but it's a solid color where this will have your pattern, you know, on the street. And we'll have, obviously there'll be a little concrete because we have to pour ribbon curves, so you'll see concrete, you'll see this pattern, and then anything going vertical, i.e. the brick pavers, the sitting benches, not the brick pavers, but the landscape planters, that'd be a solid color. There won't be any mixing and matching of color.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's the easiest meeting we've ever been to.
I'm sure it's gonna be a little harder.
Thank you.
Nice.
Very nice.
Brian, do we keep those as evidence? Oh, no, not this.
I think we might want him to take this one, take that one.
We'll let him take it. Mr. Cobb, next item.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, you get an op, this is an opportunity for council to receive an update on the designs for Center Park, as well as your first opportunity to review concept plans for the Amphitheater Cultural Center. Dick Slather is here, Mr. Greg Bryla is here. He's gonna take you on a walk through what we call the different rooms of the park, and he's gonna tell you about the different aspects of the park. We're about 80 percent plans now, and tonight we're gonna be asking for consensus to move forward to go to our 100 percent construction documents. Also, we, what's new with these plans is that we've now worked into the design, the restrooms, the concession stand, the boat house, and they've also put in a site plan for the Amphitheater Cultural Center. As I said, this is your first opportunity to look at the concepts for the amphitheater. Mr. George Powell is here tonight, and he'll be presenting that for you as well. The very last exhibit of your packet was some cost estimates for the entire park. The total price right now is around $4,492,303. Been talking with Mr. Kavanaugh, and these are preliminary estimates, and one of the things that we've talked about in the past is that we may have to sit down one day and go through a prioritization of the different aspects of the park. One of the reasons why Mr. Bryla, when he does, when he does his presentation, he's gonna take you through different parts of the park so that we can, when it comes time for us to do that priority, that we will be able to compartmentalize the different components. What Mr. Kavanaugh has asked is that we wait to do that so that, give him an opportunity to go and get some hard costs. And once we have the hard costs for the park, then we can sit down and have a meaningful discussion about prioritization. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bryla and let him take you on a walk through the park.
All right, Brian, so just to be clear, we're gonna wait till we have the hard costs to set the bar?
Yes, sir.
So, tonight, we're just going to, at the 80 percent plan stage, just either approve, continue moving along, or tweak?
Right. Brian is correct.
Can I say one thing? In order to get the cost, I've gotta finish the drawings, or 80 percent on the park drawings were probably 15 percent on the cultural center and amphitheater. With a little bit of luck, we'll get blessing tonight to take that to 80 percent because I really can't get you the cost you need until the amphitheater, amphitheater and the cultural center with the boat house restroom facilities, until they're done. And I'm hoping to have that exercise done within a max of six week period.
Okay. Doug, you're gonna be busy on vacation.
Steve?
Everybody ready? I like that, Brian, walk through the park. Good evening. My name's Greg Bryla, studio leader at Dick Slather. And what we're gonna see tonight is we're gonna go, as you've already seen in your packet, I'm just gonna walk you through each one of the spaces and how they've, since their inception in January, through the natural progression into construction documents. And I mixed it up a little bit from the packet that you have, so it's not gonna be just a big black and white presentation looking at technical drawings, so that should be a little bit more fun. This is the master plan that you all saw in March at that progress, and we're just using this as kind of a, an orientation. The only key thing in this to note is the overlook and the cultural center at that time were not shown, and at your request, those have been added back in. And so, we have this new updated key plan as well. So, you can see all the elements are still there with the addition of the, what we're calling the overlook and the cultural center. And we're gonna refer back to this map as we move through the park. And what I'm going to do, just for orientation, you can see the overlook, which is at the almost top 12 o'clock on the screen, and then I'm gonna move in a counterclockwise fashion and just go room by room. So, it's, instead of jumping through the technical drawings, which although they're organized well, it's just easier, I think, to do this. So, here we go. This is, this is our cover sheet. There we go. The sheets as they're broken out in the set. We just talked about the brick pavers. So, the key map, obviously overlook being at the top. This is what was, we showed back in March, with the exception of the overlook, but what this communicates is obviously the, the center stair coming off the east-west street. You can see a rendition of the Osprey Tower and then some of the architectural and vegetative characteristics for the park. And what that looks like now in 80 percent document form is this. You can see the, and apologize, it's split on two pages, the existing retaining, or the retaining wall that Tom's building, I guess now, and then the walkway that goes up to the top of the amphitheater lawn, which is basically about eight feet above street level. There, and it's at less than 5 percent, so there's no handrails required on that ramp, which is a nice thing, so you won't have skateboarders in that aspect of your park. And then here, the continuation to the south, you can see the overlook across the perimeter walkway, which is in the middle of the sheet, over into the park itself. What is shown just west of the very tip of the overlook, the small square, is the Osprey Tower itself. And here's, again, details, the profile of the overlook suggested, or what we're looking at for construction methods, framing plan. If you've never seen a detail of an Osprey Tower, this is what one looks like on the lower right. The cap rock walls are actually under a little bit of, we're looking at a couple different materials, again, same issue of availability, but the character that you saw, that we have in those character images is still its original design intent. Very passive section of the park, just merely a perimeter walkway on the west side. And then, so we moved down there now, we just passed it, so we are right now landing at the residential overlook, the dog park, the veterans tribute, and the performance stage. The updated sketch that you saw in March, this, to the right of it, the green lawn area is the performance lawn for the small, what's been affectionately dubbed the Jimmy Buffett stage. This also has incorporated the veterans tribute, and again, the city fountain with the flanking iconic towers. The oak trees that are on the left side of the image have, separate that from the dog park, so the dog park is off-screen to the left. And what you saw in March on the Jimmy Buffett stage, this has been advanced as well, the veterans tribute. Now, the Jimmy Buffett stage and all that has been reconfigured for all the site conditions that you're aware of, but just the plan of that. So, what this sheet shows, again, in the upper left is the city, the neighborhood plaza, and the entrance to the dog park kind of combined there, so we get some, you know, critical mass of planting and architecture. You see the dog park lawn, kind of the trapezoidal shape, and then in the center of the sheet is the veterans tribute, and then the Jimmy Buffett stage on the right-hand side. And you can see how that, because of the muck issues on site, that's been brought in board a little bit because structurally, we can't place that in that never-ending muck hole. So, that's really been the only tweak in that regard. And this, there's a couple of details here that pertain to those spaces, and there's a couple of details that, actually, they all are. What this has, flagpole details, some of the movable furniture that we're gonna have under the end of the event lawn towards the wet deck area. You can see the canopy shapes for, that we're using for the dog park sitting area and the neighborhood plaza, and then a detail of the dog park fence. Veterans tribute details. It starts, obviously, there's lots of different sections cut through this thing, the design intent sketch that you saw before in the upper right, and then these are just pieces and parts, not only for pricing, but as we move this towards construction documents. And obviously, that's why if this is at 80 percent, you know, a big elevation, this is where, and the image that you see in the upper right, where the names would be placed, so elevation of that wall, paving detail and a plan detail. The city fountain detail that happens there next to the street suggested the tile mosaic that we're using. And again, the, because of the muck issues, the stage foundation has had a couple of redesign elements to it because of the structural considerations for the wall, has changed the footings and the piers, so the, the stage itself is going to look like that. We're, we're still, it's been advanced, obviously, since this point, but we weren't able to get that to you in the package before the meeting. Very simply, there's the elevation of it without the roof at the very bottom of how that'll present itself to the water. So, what you can see on the left-hand side, kind of that darker elevation section is the curvature that will have the oak tree next to it. You see the stage in the center, the ramp up to the side, and then on the right side of that elevation will be the veterans tribute area. Some miscellaneous typical details through the park, paving and some of the brick detailing around the palm trees, the cutouts that you just saw. And then, as we move from the event lawn to the wet deck, family lawn, and what we're calling the junior senator plaza, it's that space between the playground and the, and the family lawn. This is what you saw back in March, and yes, there was some discussion, so what we, what we had done is we updated, put together a lot of information on this graphic to show the original sketch that was in the center that you saw in January, and we, we captured a, a new image of that icon from the, from the same view, so that you can see it's still in the same spot. It's just taken on a different form, and this is what we're, this is the video tower. The wet deck area has been designed, you can see it in the center graphic at the bottom, it has the grid of pop jets and spray jets in it, as depicted in the original sketch which you requested. And then showing, you know, obviously, the, the technology of the video screen is still under development. In addition to that, we also showed how we're using the, these light towers. Some of them are showing up on the residential product, and then we're using those in the park, so it all feels like a district. So, the taller one that's shown here is the one that you saw at the city fountain at the front of the park, and then the other two smaller ones are used on the family lawn area and the playground. So, instead of just using the same pattern on everything, the, much like on your city seal, we have celery at the city fountain, we have a citrus one that's shown on the right-hand side, and the center one is depicting the Osprey that happens towards the playground area. So, in plan view, you see the event lawn where the future restaurant site will be on the lower left, the wet deck about in the middle, and then moving up the page, the family lawn. And you see the squares kind of going around the outside shape of that, those are those light columns that have the citrus on them. And then, the, the upper area that kind of juts out up into the lake, and I'll try this with a laser pointer, you can see it on the screen right here, this is the, what we're calling the junior, junior senator plaza. And again, if you remember from the original concept, we have the family lawn on one side, the playground on the other, so this plaza has the concessions and the restrooms, so that'll serve both sides. It's easy to get to from a parent watching, they can easily see, you know, natural, and natural surveillance around the concession area and the restrooms for everybody. And then with the junior senator, if you remember, is the clone of the senator, the state champion cypress tree that we're suggesting to put in that plaza, which I can't get it to read on the screen, in that area, between the, the two small buildings. And, and of note, the concession-
The pointer might actually work better on that screen.
Okay, thank you. This, can everybody see that? Okay, this is the, what we're calling the concession coffee shop. This is the restroom building. Per your request, we now have six fixtures each, men's and women's.
Okay.
Progress.
There you go.
Yep. The footprint got a little bigger, but we made a couple of tweaks and changes.
Six is in 12, though. We need 12 in each.
No, just 12 in the women.
Okay.
Is there any women in here? Don't you agree with me that the men's room always moves fast, but the women's?
Right. And, and again, knowing that we're not building these for Christmas and Easter, we originally had, I think, three in March. We bumped it to four, and now we have six. So, and, and the entrance to that is here, so from the playground, a mother or father can watch the entrance to those restrooms, just naturally surveilled. We have the coffee shop here, so the junior senator plaza is here, this is gonna be a crush shell, and the senator will sit here, and you'll, and I'm gonna show you in a minute the elevations of the buildings that we're looking at together, so you understand, again, spatially how all this is, is working. This is the wet deck, and I'll go over this again. This is the video tower in the, the same spot that the chimney that you saw earlier. The light columns of the citrus are here, here, and here with the steps, brick steps going around them. And then this will be the artificial turf lawn that'll have the chess pieces in it, and then a trellis bordering the sidewalk to get some spatial enclosure into the park. And then, this is the entrance stairs to the playground area and an access way without steps. It's slope walkway, so the next. And then, just the details, you saw the towers, this is what they look like in a construction And these are all intended to be laser-cut aluminum, so the patterns that you see here all laser routed out, internally lit. The elevation of the video tower, and, and again, we're still working in, in design and the technology for this, and again, what it has on the sides will be the citrus laser-cut aluminum, and then the video panels in the center that can be easily programmed either, and, and we're looking and talking whether it's on-site or can it be done remotely, so that somebody in the city office can actually change the display on these. Here's your technical sheet for the wet deck pop jets. And then, as I said, this is the, the architecture that we have in the park, the small pieces, the coffee house, the restroom building, and the boat house. If you remember the original design concept, that the wetland that's between this park and historic downtown is the wetland, and again, all, I'd love seeing this on, on the seal, let you, here, what we're doing is we're paying an updated nod to your heritage. So, the design concept for the elevation of these buildings is an inverted kind of agricultural look to it. So, the, the buildings are, the building is shown, I would say, on the, I'm sorry, on the left side of the page is the boat house, where, when the chicken boats come, this is an office that can do point-of-sale selling t-shirts, any merchandising for the chicken boats, which is gonna be huge, because everybody's gonna want "I did the chicken boats" t-shirt and whatnot. And, and the buildings are all very similar in character, but it's not a period piece. It's not intended to be something that was built in 1920, so it's paying homage to some of those forms, but at the same time, extremely durable materials. So, we've got metal siding on, and stucco on these. We've got cast concrete bases for the columns, the, the piers, and steel for the brackets. The signing right now is just a placeholder, something that we'll have to look at in more detail. And then, on the left side, you were also suggesting two possible color schemes for you to look at, though we, our preference is to leave the, the metal unfinished, or a clear finish, and then using color just to pop out those points where the park patrons will interact with the building. The only difference being, the restroom building, which is on the lower right, here, on this elevation, what we're calling the play elevation, this is what you'll be able to see from the playground area, and then the plaza elevation, the reason that we showed you this one, and there's a large stucco panel, which we're thinking this is probably going to extend all the way up to the eve, because the bathroom building got a little bigger, trying to pave all the way around the, the senator, if you will, is gonna make that a lot smaller. So, what we did is we took that crush shell all the way to the face of this building, and then as a stucco backdrop to that plaza space, the idea is that we're actually gonna use this for a mural, something that is, it's a piece, it could be a piece of public artwork. Obviously, it's not a physical thing, but it'll be a painted, applied image. We don't know kind of what that is. There's a lot of different opinions on whether chickens are used or not, but certainly, it could be something we would hope from, you know, the city's past paying homage to that, and a stylized kind of graphic, not so much a, you know, a work of art Renoir kind of thing, but just more of a, an old building graphic that you might have seen from way back when.
Sort of like what they did up at the mall. The mall has historic pictures up and down the halls, by the offices, and by Sears, I think.
And you could take one of those, and you know how, you could just-
I'm not, I'm just asking if that's what you mean.
What, I, I'm not, I haven't seen those pictures, but if it were something of a, a lakefront scene with the steamship, something in the foreground, you then take what could be a photograph and make it more positive, negative, just black and white, so there's not a lot of detail, but you see the image, and that gets applied, painted to that finish is the idea. And certainly, the artwork would be submitted for everybody's approval by the time we get there. You may choose to have a public artist do it, but we would suggest it to keep it in that family, so it's in character with the rest of the park, that it'd just be a very simple, bold image, because it will have a tree in front of it. So, that's why we like kind of a wetland, lake character of that.
I, I was just curious of the process. I mean, way too early to worry about what the picture is.
Yep. So, again, leaving the plaza, as depicted there, we're moving to the playground area, and this is actually, as you saw originally, this is what you saw in March. It's, it's, it advanced quite a bit, and we've taken Drew's comments on board with the apparatus selection, that it's part of the city's standards, but we've added a little twist.
And you listen to Drew?
Knowing he's going to maintain and operate it, yes, sir, because, and, and what you'll see, though, is in, in the original concept sketch, which is, I cropped a little piece of it here with the sandhill cranes, which when I left, I was here at City Hall last week, and on my way back, of course, there were two sandhill cranes walking alongside of the road. Having that wetland character come across the amphitheater lawn, what we've, what we showed you in March is how we're taking that character and infusing it into the play area so that it becomes a very much a stewardship move for kids, because if you can teach kids the respect and the appreciation for that, it goes a long way towards having that preserved in, in the future. So, this is what you saw in March. I apologize, the image, the plan image on top is actually 180 degrees from the plan image on the bottom, which is what you had seen earlier, so, but the reason I'm showing you the one on top is, this is what we're going, the pattern that we're gonna do with the play surfacing, so there's gonna be an, an area that looks, you know, more water-oriented, and some of it's gonna be, look more with the tan, more land-oriented. What's happening on this piece is the boat house has shifted slightly due to some drainage issues, and then this is the Osprey trellis, which you saw before. And, so, when people are sitting underneath this, the shadow pattern's coming through as much like, you know, again, tying all this sort of wetland character together. And this is what the playground looks like in construction drawings. The location of the boat house, here's the trellis, the play equipment's lined out with all the correct fall zones and whatnot. And then, these, this is the promenade with the lake being on the left side. You see the small squares, those are the Osprey light towers. And then, as we move north from the playground area, you'll see the- And then, as we move north from the playground area, you'll see the addition of the chicken boat dock, and what we're calling kind of the boardwalk, start of that, so, and the periscope, if you remember, that element is located, is the large black area at the end of that promenade. Everything that happens north of that, the big white spot, is the event lawn that leads to the cultural center, and then to the left side of the page is the boardwalk that undulates out over the lake through a small stormwater slash wetland area. The construction details for the osprey trellis, my brother's also a builder, so when I showed him the original concept image, he said, "Good luck getting somebody to lay that thing out." So, obviously, we had to build a model of it, so you can see what this is for all the contractors in the room, there's five modules, and they're all the same, so we're just repeating the layout of that module. So, if they try to stick you with a higher fee for trying to build something like that, it's very methodical. Now, this is the fun part, this is the playground equipment, it's a little more higher-end than some of the other play areas, and since the bird swings, we heard you at the other meeting where somebody didn't like the idea of having these big swinging custom elements, what we're able to do, if you see in the top of the picture, we've, they had an off-the-shelf item, which I'll show you in the next slide, because I want to come back to the, oh, here's even a better one. This element at the bottom is a small featured sort of roof that they have over one of their stations, so seeing what they had off the shelf, we got them to actually add, talking to the manufacturer, they're adding this element of the sandhill crane on top of their standard feature. So, when you're walking along in the park, we still get that original look that we want without voiding any warranties or anything like that, and we still get the character that we originally after. So that was a really, you know, in my mind, was a great bonus. All the play equipment is inclusive from two years old to 12 years old, and from the operations and maintenance side, if anything needs maintenance, since they're manufacturers that you already are using, it's a very easy repair or replacement. So we have the promenade and the boardwalk area, again, the original concept sketch, and you can see how maybe some of the characters changed, there's the sandhill cranes, the fabric trellises have been replaced with the osprey trellis, and then you see the periscope in the center of the image, the event lawn to the cultural center is to our right. We have been talking about the wall, and you saw, I guess, in May, when we were talking about removing the railing, creating a very wide edge, that's been used in Sanford, there's an image there of West Palm Beach, and the city of Kissimmee, which I think you may have seen in a separate email, city of Kissimmee just opening their lakefront park, has a very, almost identical detail to that, I know mostly, because I did that one as well. But same, and I say same conditions, same amount of drop, same width to the cap, and it's great. So, since we've moved from a poured-in-place concrete wall to a segmental wall, we've added this concrete seat cap to it, and what this graphic is showing is how we're terminating the end of that block, so you're not looking at the cut end of a block. There's a post for the decorative railing that's being used in certain areas, just seeing how that transition works, and then if you'll notice closely how in the, this left-side image, the indentation in the block is instead of having skate stops that you see all around that are just bolted into the concrete, what we're actually doing is taking the seat and just moving it two inches. So it's poured-in-place concrete that has a built-in skate stop that doesn't look like a skate stop. The other thing that we've done, because we have a, we have an urban assault, he's also known as a skate, he was a skate, he was a skater in his previous life, so we asked him what they looked for, what he used to look for in urban elements to skate on and grind on and do all those sorts of things. So we picked his brain, went to the source, and designed in some details for this. You'll see here, there's a band, there's a strip of pavers in front of the seat wall that have, the dark gray is actually like a split-face roadway paver, so to get a skateboard across that, and the band is about two and a half to three feet wide, so they would have to jump literally their skateboard three feet to land on this wall, but they're not going anywhere, because the steps in the seat are about 16 inches, so they're not going to be grinding on this wall and marring it up. He says although they will, because that's the nature of a skater, if the skateboard goes over into the pond, you know, that's a chance they're willing to take, I guess. And some sections, and what we've done was we've, the lake in these images is towards the right, so you can see how we battered, sloped the top of the seat, so it's back, so if anybody is sitting on it, there's just a natural inclination back towards the park. And then, and both of those show the terminal cap, and then the, where the wall actually extends up two more blocks. So, Tom has all these details, and we vetted them with the contractor. So this is actually part of the infrastructure package that's going in now, but I wanted you to see these, so you can see it all in context. Some not very exciting-looking details, but they actually are going to give a lot of life to it, and of note, while you see leaves on a construction drawings, we're actually patterning some of the concrete. So again, that wetland character, the trees, so, you know, we have trees that people up north don't have, or on certain coasts, so again, it's all very subtle points, adds a lot of texture and adds a lot of character to that. Miscellaneous details for the dog park, and we aggregate some of these all on certain sheets. The one that I wanted to show you here is the decorative railing that has the park's motif that you've seen in tile, it's actually laser-cut aluminum, and those, again, happen at the bumpouts through the park. The other fun detail that we're still working on, because we've never actually seen one, is the periscope, which is shown here. And really what it is, we've been talking to some eagle experts, you can look online and find Eagle cams, so we're using the same technology, so it'll be wireless, and then the really, the part that we're, that we're working on is what is the viewfinder? You'll notice we have two, so there's one for smaller children and ADA accessible, and one for adults. These will not, you know, pivot and move, so there's no danger of anybody getting injured or running into each other, and so having that made to a public standard is what we're researching now. And then, I think you also have, because it's all server-based, that you'll have the ability with the cameras, to be able to add additional cameras, you know, around the park. Now, how we cycle through some of those, it could just be on an automatic rotation when you look through the viewfinder, but, and of course, to reinforce the original ideas, then we look through the periscope, you actually have a view, intimate view into the osprey nest. And if you've ever seen one online, I encourage you to go online and actually look up, you know, southwest Florida Eagle cam, and, you know, you watch them being born, you watch them feed, you know, it's just, and it's amazing how many hits that these things get, so that's the periscope. This is everybody's favorite image, I know, from the March meeting. What we've done here is, what I'm showing you is the laser-cut aluminum for the decorative railing that I just showed you, this is the, that was the CAD detail, this was the inspiration image, and the mosaic tile pattern down below it. We have advanced, of course, all the railings for the boardwalks as we move into that area. Here you can see the framing plan for the boardwalk, elevations of the railing, cross-sections, and, so, just for everybody's notice, the event lawn, when you're looking at this plan view, is over here to the right, and then when you look at this section on the left side of the page, the event lawn is here, and then we're dropping this one lens down, so this will have some stormwater in it and have some wetland plantings in it, so when you're walking along that boardwalk, you're actually able to get next to more of the wetland character, and visually, this will help tie the wetland character that connects to the historic downtown over to the playground area. So it's doing multiple things, and then at the north end of it is where we connect to the cultural center. Some other, just, these are the miscellaneous details, trash receptacles, bike racks, play equipment, drinking fountains, things that you have standards for. The lighting, and the one thing of note here is, in the street skate infrastructure package, you already have lighting specified, so instead of adding additional poles, we've taken some of those existing poles and just added another fixture to that. So you, we want the light, but we don't want to just start adding poles because it clutters up the park. And then what we're doing in other areas around the wet deck, instead of having a bunch of light poles around that, we're actually using this eyeball fixture on two poles, and having multiple fixtures on that pole. And if you've been to Disney, some of the resorts, the reason that you don't see a lot of lighting around the pool areas is because this is the lighting that they use, so they get a lot of work by using a minimum amount of poles. And of course, those only have to be on in force when the wet deck is actually open. So if you choose not to operate it, the lights don't have to be on, and we have enough ambient lighting from other sources to make that work. And other uplight, landscape lights and such, and the festoon lighting that's in the park. This is what a finished schedule looks like. And then the culture center. So, this is what we saw-
Let me just, let me just stop you for a quick second. Before we get into this one, which is the biggest feature of the park, which I anticipate more questions on.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions on what we've seen so far? Or is everybody good with it?
Good.
Good, good, good. Councilman Britton, I'm sorry?
Good for what I can see, but are we going to get the package to look at?
I don't think I've seen these charts before.
It was emailed to us.
They're, they're in the packet.
I'm looking through here, but I don't, I don't recognize some of the stuff.
Greg customized this presentation for you tonight.
Okay.
But as far as the, the drawings, the 80% drawings, those were provided to you as part of the packet, but yes, we can-
Can you put that out on the shared site for-
Yeah, just so that we can look at it. I don't, that screen's a little hard to see some of those details, but from what you're saying, it's fine.
Yeah, we, on the shared site right now is the 80% plans, but it doesn't have some of the, like, the key map here that Greg put in for your presentation, but yes, we can take this as well and put it on the shared one as well.
All right, thank you. Councilman Schenk, do you have anything?
Well, you have that, you have that big picture of that, don't you, the whole, the whole of it, yeah, it's not broken down.
Yes, I took the original key map for costing and just modified it for this presentation.
I thought I was looking at it.
Great.
How big is the wet deck? Just for-
The wet deck is same as 1,250 square feet, which is about, because it's-
Drew, that's, for your reference, that's the exact same size as Labo Preserves. Labo Preserves is 1,200 square feet. So, we have something, and they, I talked to Drew from there, talked to him, they have some learning, things that they've learned from doing it. How big is the Jimmy Buffett stage? I don't know if we had set to increase it, I'm just wondering, do we make it a little bit larger?
We did make it larger, I think we increased the depth to 14 feet, and it's also trapezoidal, so I think at the widest point in the park, it's 18 to 20. We've got it scaled, but yes, we did make that larger. I think originally, we had it at 12 by 14, and, yeah, so we increased the depth of it and the width.
The only bathrooms besides the ones that are going to be up at the, at the cultural center are the ones sitting, they pointed out.
Yes.
There are no other bathrooms.
Correct.
I really think you have to make those a little bigger, but-
I think you should split them, but I think having, I think even, I think one of the biggest things we said was more bathrooms, more bathrooms from day one, was a lot of bathrooms. It's always the complaint, we don't have enough, but you have them.
Well, let's see how it ties together up to the-
Whatever, I'm just looking at, saying more bathrooms. Infrastructure, you have fiber poles, conduit, I haven't heard us talking about at any time, sound system throughout the park, things like that.
No, we have not addressed the sound system, the light poles that are located through the park are certainly capable of having speaker systems, but we have not addressed the sound system yet.
There's enough conduit to handle-
Well, can I, one extra four-inch conduit in the ground and or any of the sound requirements that you might have? The poles have not been retrofitted, we've never talked about them, like, I have no idea what sound system you guys are proposing, whether, whether they're speakers mounted on lights, whether they're ground-bound speakers, whether they're to, you know, for people of, of, whether they're coming, or whether it's a PA system, I don't know, like, I think that that needs to be addressed at staff level and figured out, but I do have one four-inch type of conduit in the ground.
With nothing in there?
No, I have no idea what put in.
And there's no fiber throughout right yet, no?
Design fiber.
Fiber optics, it's running through it for use of the facility.
Well, Wright House will have a complete trunk line in there for any internet, television, data needs, but do, I don't know what you need for other fiber optics. You know, I remember a conversation of one time, the chief wanted a conduit in the ground to provide some security cameras on-
Light bulbs and stuff.
On posts, hence the four-inch conduit that I have in the ground right now. Like, you could run multiple wires through us, but I had, never had a discussion with anybody as it relates to sound system and patient, you know, what you guys want to see there.
Okay. I'm good.
Brian, I remember us having a conversation, and I don't remember if it was everyone but public, but it might have been between you and I about sound system throughout, because we, I thought we talked about, like, if there was something on the, you know, on stage, and if you wanted to run it throughout the whole park, that you would be able to do that.
Yes, ma'am, that's what our intent to do is, is that we would be able to, be able to have sound throughout the park, and it was something that we can sit down with Mr. Kavanaugh and begin those discussions on how we can fit all that into the park, but that was, that was always the intent, that if you had a, if we had a concert going on, then you would, it wouldn't matter where you were in the park, you'd still be able to hear.
Right.
If you were strolling on, when there wasn't a concert there, if you were strolling through the park, then you would be able to hear music of some sort, you know, we could pipe it through. So, that's the idea.
All right.
Would these be ground speakers, that you're thinking about, some of them look like a rock, but-
Ground, whatever, just like the malls have, and any other place that you're walking around has.
Disney.
Disney, whether it's ground, up on the light pole, whatever, I don't really care, I think that's been a point that we've talked about, again.
I have to agree.
For a while.
We need to include that as we're moving along. Now, I realize that's a bolt-on item, that, you know, can be bolted on, and it sounds like the in-ground infrastructure is going to be there to accept it, but it has to be part of the total plan.
Well, but the more you design it up front, having a, again, I don't know, but I'm going to guess that where you're going to terminate it, where you're going to run it from, where the junctions are going to be, can relate to, there's going to be specific places, whether you're going to terminate, junction it, or have a fiber run throughout, and then it really doesn't matter where you are, but that's something, I know from the beginning we had-
Wireless, you know.
Talking fiber, did you either wireless, but for those kind of things, whether it's sound, lighting, et cetera, it runs through there.
Does the city have a spec, or have any other speaker system in the public realm right now, that you, system that you guys use?
Not really, let's just cut to the chase, we don't.
Okay, all right.
Do you have a lot of visual expertise, or this is way out of modeling?
Because it's certainly something that you're going to operate and maintain.
You know, I think it's a nice idea to have the ground mounted, but this isn't a Disney, it's not a secure area, it's going to be open all the time, you might want to consider mounting them on poles so that they don't walk away in the middle of the night.
middle of the night. Are the, are there going to be, uh, power outlets pre-installed to power these things?
At base of poles and such?
I did see a nice feature at UCF last week, I was sitting on a bench, and they had stubbed up, uh, outlets underneath the benches, so you could sit there and plug your laptop in or something if you needed to. It's, uh, all-weather outlets, so something to think about.
It's a good spot for them, too.
Is that included in this?
We will make sure that that is included in their electrical distribution plan.
Much easier to do while you're building it now than to add it later.
Yes, sir.
Same with the sound, like I said, they, maybe a bolt-on to the light, but everything that powers it and forwards it and gets it there is now.
Tom, uh, may I, can I? Tom, you said Bright House is going to run their, their trunk in there, you know, they have hotspots all over the place, are they, well, like, maybe it's too early to ask, but will that have a hotspot in there from Bright House?
Yeah, at, at some point in time, the city has a contract with Bright House as to what their service is going to be. You know, we talked about, you know, the video walls, this and that, and I'm not even 100% sure what you're going to need in the form of data.
Right.
But there's going to be a trunk line, um, with a stubout, that once you guys prepare what you need, it should be very easy for Bright House to get you those services.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to feed all those apartments and townhomes and everything capable, so I know, I know they, if you're on Bright House now, there's so many places around town that have hotspots.
Right.
So I'm sure they'll put one in there, and that'll answer Councilman Schenk's question, someone's in there needs to get on their iPad or something, near Bright House, or like, we make it available for people in there, I'm, I'm not sure, but.
It's a service that you probably have to pay for.
As long as they have the trunk going in there, they're putting fiber in there, it's easy to do.
That's good.
So you only got to figure out the sound. And I'm with Councilman Britton, you got to put those, you got to have the sound, they, whatever speaker is got to be up on the pole, you know, but they'll steal them as soon as there are those rock speakers, and they'll be gone, you know?
All right, so to recap what I heard, we're going to just address or re-address restroom facilities, outlets, as Councilman Britton brought up, sound, as all of us have brought up, and the stubout point, or the terminus point for everything, as Councilman Schenk brought up, in, in reference to the sound, the video, wireless, start talking to Bright House now.
All right. And we'll need staff recommendations on what you.
That's all.
What, yeah, criteria you need. In reference to the bathrooms, we're talking about upsizing them to how many?
Well, we don't know, uh, that's.
What does the code require?
The code requires, originally required two fixtures for the wet deck. That was the only real code requirement. We provided three at that time. The city's request was, we need more, we now have six, so.
I would think, just my opinion, but six is adequate for probably 95% of everything that's going to go on out there, and that other 5%, we would, we would still need to bring in porta potties, I would think, if we had an event.
Plus, we're going to have, we didn't get up to the, uh, amphitheater yet, has a whole bunch of them, too.
There are restrooms in the building you're about to see as well, that are accessible from outside.
There's nothing worse than having a, a bunch of extra plumbing that isn't getting used, because it's hard to maintain that stuff, you know, it becomes a odor problem if you, if you don't have enough people flushing those toilets.
All right, let's, um, move on, then, unless anybody has anything else on the south half?
Well, to be clear, are we leaving the restrooms like they are? Do we need to look at?
Let's see what you have in the Culture Center first. We'll leave them for now.
This is what you saw back in, in March, um, using our concept plan. The image on the right is the key one, where we took the original, um, design program for function space, offices and whatnot, and we laid out schematically how these could be arranged so that they relate to the site context of the park, the operation of the park. So even in this very early concept, we had a street side entry and drop-off. We had, uh, the main ex, uh, function space, we had the service kitchen on one end, the green is the amphitheater, the stage towards the back, uh, office restroom component, shown here in the purple, and then there was a porch that related to the event lawn, which, uh, at the time was accommodating about a 60 by 100-foot tent. And what you'll see from that is the updated plan, and I apologize, and just for orientation, this plan is rotated 90 degrees clockwise, so north is to, um, the right side of the sheet. You can see the lake in the blue, and then if you, and what we've done, there's the, the amphitheater lawn, the event lawn's gotten a little bit smaller because of the amount of, uh, architectural program that, that's in there. The white block is the, the building that you'll see, and we put on here the red arrows, so you can see how many accesses there are from outside into the building. So there's three across the front, um, there's one back towards the service area, there's the main back of the stage, we've, uh, added, uh, um, one towards the lakeside elevation, and then the one farthest left is the entrance to the restroom, and you're going to see this in much greater detail in, in just a moment. But the reason that we wanted to show you this is, this is actually a three-sided, um, front elevation, if you will. It has a lakeside that many people are going to see, and probably is going to, I, I would, um, I tend to call this the front porch, but we're calling this the, uh, the lakeside porch. The event porch, which is going to get a lot of, um, heavy lifting with what happens on the event lawn, so that you can use that for outdoor weddings, bands, farmers, market, you know, setting up tents, et cetera. And then you have the street side entry, which has, uh, in one concept, has a very large porch across the front, and certainly the, the large plaza. We removed, as you remember back in the original concepts, um, prior to January, there was a curb and gutter asphalt drive in front of this. We've removed that and added a, more of a flush paving condition, so that, um, people are not, and just, we don't want to encourage people to park there, and if it looks like a road with a curb and gutter and asphalt, people are more than likely going to park there. So this is a, um, flush condition where people can pull up, drop off, uh, you know, the bride in, um, wedding gown and grandmother, et cetera, and this is really the ceremonial entrance, street side entrance to the building. If you're walking along the park side, there's a large porch in back, a large set of grand steps coming up the back, um, to be able to get into either the building or very easily into the, uh, the restroom facilities, which are located, again, on this side of the wing. And you'll see in more detail when George does his, uh, part of the presentation, we also have the ramp and stairs to get up to the stage, um, on this side, and then the loading dock is on this side, also with ramp, um, and stairs down to the service area. And again, what the, how it's incorporated now, and again, as Tom said, the, the building's about a 15%, but, um, to make this very efficient, because, um, George and Steve have been working in CAD, this building is, is very well integrated into the park infrastructure, uh, right now. So with that, I will turn that over to the Powell Design Group.
Uh, good evening, my name's George Powell with Powell Design Group. Uh, Mr. Kavanagh retained our firm to provide the architectural support for the project, and we're, um, very happy to be part of the team and to be here to present what we've got so far. This, uh, is a, a detailed view of our floor plan, and if I could, I'll walk you through real quickly, um, the various spaces and explain to you what we've done. In general, the green area shown is the outdoor space, uh, it includes the, the amphitheater stage, some circulation behind the stage, the main front entry porch that Greg talked about, the event porch that faces the event lawn, and this is all tied together with the back porch that faces the lake. The yellow area is the support area, which on this side of the building is, is the, uh, service kitchen or prep kitchen, uh, with a restroom, janitor's closet and, and mechanical space, a, um, an office that has an outside entry, and then a second office or flex space for storage, office, whatever use you decide. Uh, in between the multipurpose room and the stage, we have located, um, our storage, audio, electric, um, prop storage, uh, these are all functions that will work both for the stage, uh, amphitheater stage, and the multipurpose room. And then on the, uh, far side here, we have, uh, men and women's restrooms, and I believe we have seven, uh, women's and, uh, four men's, uh, toilets, and then three urinals for the men. So this, this space, uh, along with the, uh, women's and men's green rooms, that will support anything going on in the multipurpose room, or as a dressing room or changing room, uh, for the amphitheater, uh, with, as you can see, access both from the multipurpose and from the exterior. These bathrooms can serve the amphitheater lawn, uh, during a concert or during a presentation where people can come around, uh, not, you know, stay away from the stage and get into the restrooms, and also serves, uh, the other part of the park from the, uh, event lawn and the, and the other southern portions. The multipurpose theater, or multipurpose room then, uh, also has a raised platform, small stage, so this can be used for, you know, a band, a trio, whatever, uh, for something going on in here, or a stage for a presentation or a lecture, um, excuse me. And then also has access, uh, to the service area to bring, uh, equipment in, or if you say have the, uh, have, have a large performance going on out here where you have 20 or 30 people performing, the multipurpose room can become the green room, and they, they are then able to get on the stage from behind the backdrop. The, uh, the one thing that we did in this building that, that really wasn't on the original program, but ended up working out fantastic, is we were able to get a large area of glass and doors facing the lake, which was not really part of the original program, but really ties this building into the use of the lake and the promenade around the lake. Any questions?
Is that porch covered?
This porch?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the dash line you see around the perimeter is all roofline.
Oh, I see.
All the green, all the green is covered.
Yes.
Maybe there's just one rocking chair out there, that's wide enough so you could sit in a rocking chair and have five feet of fun in you for pedestrian.
Oh, good. I'll be ready for that rocking chair.
Me, too.
This, uh, we had a lot of discussion about, uh, farmers market.
Cracker barrel, is that what you're thinking?
We had a lot of conversations about farmers market and expanding and, and even moving out into the road, and we've modified this front porch area, so then we've got three sets of doors out here that can really open up this, this room and tie into that. So this, this space becomes, in our opinion, about as flexible as it can possibly be to accommodate your, your amphitheater, your, your lawn, your, what, what might go on in the streets for closing that down, and then being able to service the whole thing.
Anything else? Other questions? Questions? Nope, continue on.
Okay.
Um, as far as the building elevations, uh, Greg has up here two rendered color elevations, two different color schemes. What we wanted to do conceptually, what we're looking at now is, and I'm going to probably really mess you up, we're looking at the front of the building, street side. this, this lower elevation shows a single, um, drop-off canopy that will stretch out and allow somebody to drop somebody off out of the weather. The upper elevation shows an alternate with the, uh, three doors across the front that ties that, that, uh, that counter, cantilevered overhang out all the way across the front and covers that front deck. Uh, the whole concept here is to, to accentuate the, the three elements of the building on the front elevation, so you have your center portion, it would be a high, uh, very similar, actually, to this room, except with an exposed ceiling. Uh, with the, the front facing the road being the high point and sloping down to the, to the back over the stage. And then either end of the building are the, the more, um, utilitarian functions of the bathrooms and the kitchen, and then you can see the, the, uh, canopy for the, the, uh, event lawn, uh, porch on that end.
What's the building made of?
The majority of the building is going to be concrete and structural steel framing, metal bar joists. Uh, on the, on the backside of the amphitheater, we're looking at a stylized, uh, arch proscenium, uh, joist that will be the main feature. The, the top elevation, uh, shows being back up the, um, amphitheater lawn looking at the stage, so you see the arched, uh, truss there that would be supported by two major The concept of this was, was along with the rest of the park to try to make it look organic as possible, so the columns are, are designed to look like tree limbs coming up and branching out and holding up the, the structure, and we've done that consistently all the way around the building.
In that view, where's the event lawn area?
Pardon me?
That'd be to the. In that view, where is the event lawn?
In the top view, the event lawn would be to your right.
In the bottom view, we're looking at, we're looking from the.
Yeah, the bottom view, you're at the event lawn, looking back at the, the event stage. Event porch.
Okay, what else you got for us?
That's it.
Now you need decisions.
And, and one thing that I'll, that I'll mention, that it's great working with George's group, it's been a very collaborative, uh, effort, and, and what we did, um, we did two color schemes, again, so you can see that, uh, the, the high-dollar materials are on the, the largest part of the building, which is in the center. The two service wings on either side, uh, were, you know, there's a, there's a lime, uh, cast stone base, much similar to what we're doing in the park, um, and in this scheme, anyway, there's a siding in the front, or another all option is doing a, a brick, shown on the bottom. But then on the sides, the reason that we showed the elevation, so you don't, you understand it in context, it will have planting in front of it to tie it in, so the, even though in the bottom elevation, the, um, the service wings, um, in a more economical, uh, material, and right now it's considering that stucco, but then taking the expansion joints and giving it that wetland character by, by, uh, juxtaposing them a little bit, and then when you put the plant material in front of that, that part of the building, you know, kind of visually recedes, and it puts the emphasis on the center of it, which is the, uh, where the guests and the residents will interact with the building.
Now, above the entranceway door.
Yes.
That is glass up top there?
This is a clear story, and there, there are glass square windows, and we just did a color band around the top of that, so you are still getting natural light into the building, which was, uh, the city's request during the, some of those sessions.
Which way is that building facing?
Both of these elevations are the same, it's a, it's the street side.
Which way is that elevation facing?
Oh, I'm sorry, east.
So sunrise?
Yes, sir.
So you won't have the sun glaring in there in the afternoon, you'll just have the natural light coming in?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can you go back to the other one, because I think you wanted decision on, isn't the first decision going to be three doors or two doors?
I would.
Run, run us through the decisions.
That, yes, sir, the, the decisions for this, the options. The decisions for this, the options that you have to choose from, is there's a three-door configuration versus a two-door. This plan in front of you shows a three-door. The two doors, these two columns remain in both options. What we did in the three-door option is to extend the porch all the way across the front for the flexibility that George talked about, and then instead of the two doors that you could see in the elevation that happened between these columns, have just been aggregated into one, and then adding the two to either side.
Since you made the rendering out of three doors, is that the preferred elevation?
We think it gives you a lot of the flexibility that the city's requested.
Matt, I get, just get the microphone.
Steve Handcock with George's group. All right. You're actually seeing both options. The upper one shows the porch going all the way across. The middle part does extend out far enough to create our overhang and our drop-off cover. The lower one, and this one here, you can see that it's just the two columns just identifying the entry, so it's a little less of a porch and more of a drop-off.
I guess what I'm asking you to tell us is, in your professional opinion, what is your preferred elevation?
This is the preferred elevation, which is the top one.
Okay, thank you.
Is that covered porch out front? Is it all the way covered?
Yes.
Is it all the way covered?
Yes, with the center section, as you can see the dash line, you still get the drop-off coverage, but then the side wings are only covering the porch.
Because Councilman Schenck, a great idea, that we've gone to the time and expense of making that porch almost usable now, and I can see under, you know, a nice fall day, maybe opening up those doors, and maybe having hors d'oeuvres outside, or maybe a gathering point, but I think it needs to be covered.
It is covered.
Okay, so it's all the way out to the green?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure 100%.
There's the line right there.
Okay, perfect.
Right, but the bottom elevate, the bottom drawing, it is not covered.
Right. In case you wanted to have that option, which was originally in the program, the front porch wasn't in the program, but then as we worked through it, we thought it gave you a lot of flexibility, and then the suggestion came up, so we're showing you both options.
Let's start with the front porch.
The front porch is 12 feet all the way across, and about 16 and 8 feet in the center.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, from a staff perspective, we prefer the three doors.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
What's the cost difference between the two?
Earlier, I think right before you came in, what Brian had asked us for, Keith, is they'll give us the cost once we give them the design guidelines, they're gonna come back with hard costs for us in six weeks, was the time?
Yeah, I need to finish the documents.
Right, they need to finish the documents, they can't finish the documents until we give them the criteria. Councilman Schenck, big porch, little porch?
Big porch.
Councilor?
Big porch.
Deputy Mayor?
Big covered, three doors.
So we're making decisions on aesthetics without concerning ourselves with cost right now, right?
Correct.
Mr. Britton, one thing about it, I'm trying to look at big porch versus little porch, we were looking at functionality. By having that, the street-side porch with the way the floor plan is here, we now create a better flow around both sides of the building, either lakefront or on the street side, there's a better flow in the usefulness of the building than having it on the small. We felt like there was gonna be a better interaction between the building and the street, and that was one of the reasons why the staff made the request that we preferred having more, the three doors and the porch there, rather than making it more of a drop-off. We wanted to have more of an interaction with the public, and we felt that was the way to do it. If you think about the, think about this, Farmer's Market, you know how we have the biscuits, I can't remember, up on the porch, right? So if they were up on the porch here, and Farmer's Market wrapped around, it wrapped around this way, then this porch here's gonna be a better service to the public, and then we can also do stuff on the inside, and so now you're accessing a better flow into the building, and if you had something that was more of a particular orientation like with the other doors, that's why we recommend going with the three doors. It opens up the building much more.
That's fine, I'm just asking what kind of an impact it is.
I don't think it would be large.
Okay. One percent?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Okay. I think we all agree that more is better.
More is better. But I think your point is...
Well, my point was really is there's a, I don't know, three-quarter million dollar bogey somewhere, we gotta go tackle.
I don't disagree, that's...
If we don't tackle the little stuff, then it's gonna be a big, big problem.
I don't disagree, I think that...
I think from a financial standpoint, you have to look at it in the whole, because we can't cut half a million dollars on a building thinking functional. So I think at the end of the day, with all the numbers, the decision that the council has to make is to find a way to pay for the structure now, or wait. I don't think there's gonna be an option that says, okay, guys, we're 600 grand over budget, take 600 grand out of that building, because I can't do it.
I think what you said is interesting, because I think it's all about function. I think we're gonna make it another banquet hall space, that right now, sitting costs, again, they're both rough, costs more than our community center, without the stage even. The cost of the building costs more than our community center in estimate, we're building another community center. That's, I'll say the biggest overriding problem that I have is, two things, is the amphitheater's an add-on, it's, the stage is poorly designed, and I don't mean the design of it, the functionality of the design, it's not covered, et cetera, but we've creeped this to be a wedding banquet hall, and that's what it's become, versus what it started out as, and I just don't see that we need another wedding hall and another banquet facility to go in our other banquet facility that we're gonna build. And we could look to redevelop this as an entity, rather than make it a banquet facility that it's become. My two cents.
Well, all right, to answer the question, I'm okay with the three-door. Just, I'm just making the point, and I think Stephen's making the same point, for his own reasons, you know, I think for a Farmer's Market, open-air event, and you're right, it could be a wedding venue, but it could be a lot of other things, too. So this is gonna be our destination, our community place, versus a venue for private affairs and other banquet-type things that the community center's gonna be, so I'm okay with it, I'm just concerned we're gonna creep into a corner and have to make some tough choices or cut somewhere else.
Well, and that's why they need us to make these decisions, so they can bring us back the real budgets, and then we can go through the list and see how we're gonna phase in. But, you know, to answer Councilman Schenck's question, I mean, you know, this is always meant to be the icon in the park, was this amphitheater.
I don't disagree, it's not, though. I'm gonna just, again, your opinion may be that it is, my opinion that it's not.
That's fine.
That it's become a, as we keep saying, the wedding center, the limo drop-off, it's becoming, it's being designed for a certain use.
I think it's being designed for communities, I think that...
That's what our community center's for, we're gonna compete with ourselves, and we're gonna build two community centers, and I don't know that, again, that's...
I see your point, I hear your point, but I think the community, especially all of eastern Seminole County, is completely underserved with space like this.
The what side? Oh, the eastern side.
The eastern side. I mean, there is no space like this. If we happen to have two of them, and we capture the market, that could be beneficial. There is no space, I mean, any time anybody wants to do anything, you're going the other way, so, I mean, I hear you.
I understand what you're saying, but I'll also just, I'll go back to the community center and say, I'd rather than expand on the community center, build that bigger, and make a bigger community center, and look at both dollars, and say, what do I have to spend, and where can I spend it, and what can I do with it, that's all.
All right. Brian, what next decision do you have in this building? Does I, Councilor, go?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, you good with the building the way it is?
Yes, I just think, I just wanna just add, you know, I don't disagree with what Steve is saying, but we have to remember one thing, this plan was presented to voters, you know, 10 years ago, whatever, and, you know, whether we agree with it or not, there was so much talk back then about the amphitheater, some of us didn't like it when it was just conceptual, but this is the vision we showed the voters that they approved, and I think we have to build it. I also think that, you know, the other community center, this was where I envisioned it to always be, you know, and that one came on. We do have both of them, but I think certain people are gonna wanna be in this type of venue, looking at osprey towers and all these different things, so if they wanna, you know, if I was picking a wedding right now, that location or this location, I'm picking my new downtown, so I think I would like to see this all come back the way it is, and then if we have to start making some decisions. But the biggest hook of it, I don't see how, you know, whether we like it or not, this is what our voters voted for, and I'm not willing to overturn what they voted for, so let's make it as nice as possible, and we'll figure it out. You know, I'd rather cut out a dog park and have this, you know...
Those are the decisions we'll make.
Right, the things that we have to do, but something like that to have the jewel, so...
Should we make the announcement now for Mr. Harkin?
That?
That we procured Tom Jones to sing at this?
Absolutely, we're gonna have that.
We're working on that.
This ain't gonna just be small stuff, we're gonna get some big stuff.
I think, I'm gonna just hitch on to Councilman Schenck for a second here, and I think, I'm gonna help you, well, not help you, I'm gonna...
If you let me do a couple, three things first, I'll let you go. First of all, what happened to the tinsel shade? I don't, that's been in every picture since 2007, is a fabric back. This theater is not covered enough in any way to do anything, except, as we were on the phone call last time, it was, and I feel this is generally how it is, is we're gonna get, the local band will perform there, and that's it. The entrance is onto the stage, there's a 12-inch raised deck to get onto the stage. You can't roll out anything onto the stage, there's one entrance onto the stage to get there, and it's a 12-inch lift, except to go around to a ramp and up onto the stage. So as a green room and a back room to come out onto the stage, it's very difficult.
Make the deck seat?
That becomes a problem, there's a problem for that.
Why is that step there?
The steps there to get, in the original program, was to get the stage up about 30 to 36 inches above the amphitheater lawn, and that's what that achieves. If we were to raise the entire facility up, then, right now, we have a 12-inch grade separation in the front, just so you have a traditional ceremonial steps.
What about lower than the stage?
Well, then it just comes down a little bit lower to the lawn.
What exactly are you talking about? You can't go from here to here, you gotta go 12 inches down.
Well, there's a ramp, and...
I know, there's a ramp. Again, you have a difference, and I said this on the phone call, I may be overthinking Tom Jones may be a real dream, but we can aim for the concerts that we had, was the Blood Pressure concert?
I'm thinking Kiss.
Kiss, the Blood Pressure concert, multiple acts, things like that, coming in and out off of that stage. It's an amphitheater first, the other, to me, it's an amphitheater first, that's what the people voted for, and second was the building and the green room behind it. It doesn't act very well as a green room and a way to get things in and on that stage. You need multiple points to get it on a stage, any stage has usually huge areas around it to get on and off of, to make it easy for those kind of acts.
Do you consider mead gardens good?
What's that?
Do you consider mead gardens?
Different things, I know I designed it, you're throwing it back at me, 'cause I saw the designer, we built it.
But I'm just saying, I was there, it kinda looked like this. You designed the mead gardens thing?
I was involved in designing, yeah. The orchestra that we belong to built it.
Why'd you put that step there, then?
What step there?
That mead garden.
Yeah, it's a different function, it doesn't have a green room behind it, it doesn't seem the same.
I don't have a pony in the race.
No, no, I know.
The sails out back, but I probably can tell you, and Greg made that, because I'm probably opening my big mouth, the sails are cheaper than this design.
The what?
The sails are cheaper.
Oh, the fabric, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm asking why, I don't care what, again, I'm asking why, it's been a design from the beginning, in every picture, except I think one, out of every image that's been presented.
Yes, sir. And to answer that question, it was part of the city's request, is to, when we were at, did the mead gardens tour, a lot of that discussion was, does this provide enough rain protection if we've got a big...
Right, that one does it.
Well, okay, again, we're not doing apples to apples, so the request was, if we covered it, it would give us much more flexibility with the equipment that's underneath that. That's why we did that.
Does the back never cover entirely? Doesn't, the back doesn't touch the back of the building, does it?
No, but it still provides rain protection.
The sides in the back are, I know, I saw, that comes in, and there's a separation between the rooflines on the back.
That's still covered.
Here's a roofline on the stage.
Yes.
Careful.
Yes.
This is all covered in ramps in between.
I'm good, you know what, I'll just give my opinion, I'm good.
Well, I just wanted to make it, when, just want you to understand, the decision is what it is, but what's happening is, you see in the sketch, you have the amphitheater roof, and what that does is, it extends over the top of the roof in the back, so it is rain-protected.
Right, but we all know that there's breezes and wind, and it's just gonna blow all of itself.
Much more protection, though, than the tinsel fabric, so when we were asked to provide more cover, that was the option.
Tinsel fabrics come all the way, I can look at the ones in here, and the other ones that I've seen at concert halls, that cover up entirely ground from the side, attached back to the building.
But are not 100% rainproof.
That's 50, 45, if we're gonna like talk percentages, the sides of that are wide open, versus one that comes and wraps down to the ground, almost.
Well, we have not shown, I mean, I understand your point, not arguing with you, we have not shown that ground, that complete 180-degree coverage in our precedent imagery.
Could we retrofit it to add...
Sails off the sides later on?
Off to the sides later on?
I imagine you could, from the event lawn side, remember, this is the lakeside elevation, so if you do that, you're basically blocking off that side of it. This side is probably not as big of a concern, but we still have to get equipment.
I'm just saying for, if a storm pops up, you pull a cord, and you roll it down to provide you a little extra protection from the side.
I'm sure that...
Not that it would be that way during a show or anything.
I'm sure between these two columns, that you could provide that vertical...
You could have, yeah, like a, you know, window blind type thing.
But, yeah, again, the mead gardens, when we were all there, that was directed as kind of the model that we were working with at the time, and then the request was to make it a little more weatherproof, go into a permanent roof, and as Tom said, going back to a fabric sail in that place actually makes it a less expensive structure.
Listen, you gotta remember something, you're in an outdoor environment, anyway, you know, the next thing we're gonna be talking about is how to kill all the mosquitoes when we're out there on the rug at night, too. I mean, it's an outdoor thing, Brittenbrook brings up a great point, the two sides can have something to come out, you get a big storm roll in, that comes in. My question is, to clarify what Steve was saying, these ramps, to bring equipment in, are these ramps, can somebody wheel up big amplifiers and speakers and stuff?
Yes, sir.
I'm not seeing it as a problem, I see them, right.
Semis can back up to this end of the building, and there is a 10-foot wide ramp at 5%, to be able to get from the truck dock right onto the ramp.
Right in, okay. So basically, as Tom was just saying, in this dock area, your truck can pull in there, you can come down these ramps, and you can load all your equipment on that stage.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, except for the coverings, I'm not seeing what the problem is. I mean, I know some of us don't like it, you know, we didn't like it, but I mean, I think functionality, it's an outdoor amphitheater, it's not gonna be dry all the time, but we gotta make it as perfect, you got all this equipment up there, something temporary, maybe, on the sides, and frankly, if something really bad, and we got some, we kid around with Tom Jones, but if we got some major act here that had, you know, millions of dollars of equipment up there, you know, want to come down the front, too, to close it off, I mean, how, this is not rocket science, you know? I just don't wanna kill the whole design because of a couple of things, you know?
Do you have rigging, some sort of lighting rig set up?
Let me let George address the technical aspects. In our drawings, we're not actually showing the lighting rigs, in our experience, we found that those are brought by the individual performer.
But we'll have electric.
But we'll have the ability to rig them up there, yes, that proscenial truss will be substantial enough to put, hang speakers and lighting rigs and whatever you wanna hang up.
Are we gonna have a, some sort of basic lighting and sound system for when the local groups come in, Drew?
That's what we're looking at, yes.
Not looking at, is that what we're gonna have?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
That would be an afterthought, if that's not inclusive in this, that's something...
Right, because you'll have the smaller groups come in who aren't going to bring their own lighting, that we're going to have to provide some lighting and some sort of sound like we do at Lake Yola.
For our own events and stuff, we will have, we will be able to provide that.
Just so you'll know, my contract with these gentlemen is we will provide all the pathways. Because we didn't know, so if you guys wanted to go buy a couple lights and a couple of speakers, we'll provide the pathway, pathways and connectivity to make that all happen.
Okay. Everyone's okay with the design? I'd like to see a little more stone as your, kind of, a little bit more natural stone and brick maybe to kind of tie it in a little bit more, but let's just...
Would you prefer stone or brick? You don't do stone here.
I wanted to blend, I like the way you were blending the bottom on that one color drawing. You know, I like the way you've got that segmented, I don't know if that's stone or brick on the bottom.
Stone.
Right, so, you know, make it just blend in what you've got around the lake, the segmented, like you're doing, just maybe add some, we have very talented people on staff, we have very talented people from Dix Lathrop, you know, put your minds together and... I'm not looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars of the cost, but, you know, a little stack here, stack there, change as though, look, we go to every developer in town, then we tell them, stone, brick, this, that, you know, we got to hold ourselves to the same things that we ask them. I mean, how many times would I ask you for more brick?
Right, I think what the mayor's saying, maybe split plate block, the normal plate should, stone to me is something that's hard, that if we put stone on there, that's the only place in the whole park we have stone. Brick certainly, split plate blocks certainly, you know, some tile certainly, but I'm not sure you want to add just that area.
And that's fine, Tom, the same types of things that...
Right, it's in the park already.
I think you're saying less stucco and concrete, sheer concrete? Yeah.
When we're talking about stone in this elevation...
Hate it.
This is not a stone-stone, a field stone, it's more of a smooth-cut sandstone look, not necessarily a stone-stone.
You should get with our development services staff, so you understand what we require of everybody else, and just make sure that it's incorporated into what we're building for ourselves. It can't be, you know, do as we say, but not as we do.
And Mayor, what I was talking before, why we added the plant material here, my personal preference is hiding stone, we're going to have planting in the front, so instead of hiding it, I would rather minimize the stone on the service wings and add it to the base of the stage, so that you see, so it's in those really high tactile guest interactive areas, but the other areas that are going to be planted are back of house, you know, spending the money there.
There is a ton of talent in this room.
Yes, sir.
Just, as I said, just make sure we're meeting or exceeding our own standards that we require of others. But that's all I'm asking. Anything else, guys?
Are we going to black the colors? Are we going to dress that or no?
Brian? I think colors are easy, but let's find out.
I'm sorry.
I'll have some.
Okay. Because they gave us two different color schemes.
Which one do you like, Councilman?
I like the bottom one.
Hmm?
The bottom one.
All right, the bottom one.
The bottom one?
Yeah.
Done.
I think it would look good with all this brick that he brought.
It's got an extra bricks on it. It's fine. Good.
Brian? Did you need us to decide on the color scheme? Councilwoman was asking, or is, right now, we should just finalize the design?
I'd appreciate your input on the colors, yes.
Which color scheme does Dix Lathrop prefer?
We actually like the top one.
Oh!
Well, and part of it is with the, if you choose to do the brick, we could certainly color that main block of the siding with that same color versus actually using brick.
Could you do us a favor? Could you add those amenities that you're thinking of to the color scheme that you prefer and send it out to all of us?
We will do that.
Let's take a peek at it.
Okay.
That good, Councilman?
That's good.
The top one has more, is more substantial, and I think what we were all just talking about was, is the brick, the red to match the bricks that are going to be in the roadways and the park and everything like that to the top, if you can add some of that brick in there and make it look a little like the bottom to keep that top design, we have the best of everything.
Great.
Is that hitting right on what you need?
That's it.
Yeah, that will look good.
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing that, want to make sure that we cover, as we advance these drawings, that again, the red arrows that you see here is the indoor-outdoor connections to the park. And the other two, which are the kind of orange ones in the lower side, are the two doors out of the service kitchen area, out into the service area. One of the, this is probably more George's information, but the, one of the big components of certainly the service area is the function and size of the kitchen. Currently, this is designed as a prep kitchen?
Catering.
Catering kitchen. This is not a full kitchen.
That's fine.
Any way, shape or form. And as George said, the number of bathrooms, I think he said there were seven each, seven fixtures each, so in addition to the ones in the park, seven and six, you have 13, and then you have 12 in the park.
And then if there's a big event, like Councilman Britton said, you're going to bring in portable units anyway.
Right. So does that meet the concern over the restroom counts? Great.
It looks like I'm seeing nods everywhere. And catering kitchen, definitely, we, every event that we have visited lately that's been built, that's what they're going towards.
Let me throw the caveat on this, that don't fix any of the kitchen may change, it will be a catering kitchen, but we have it going to the next step, which is to bring a professional in to design this kitchen facility to check out the functionality of it. So we reserve the right to move keys and carts around and maybe blow out a wall two feet because we have to have some equipment in there, so it's not going to be exactly like that, but it's going to be less.
That's fine.
All the functions and access are comparable.